You know, maybe a higher, a higher ruling, but that's, that's an option that I'm, you know, I have to consider depending on the decision tonight. So, we can go either way, but, and that's not, please, you know, that's not a threat. It's just, it's just a fact. It's a survival thing. So, take it whatever you want.
Mr. Weaver?
The municipal league has counseled repeatedly over the years that I've been the city attorney of this city, that granting of franchises or signing contracts, which franchises are considered contracts. Buyer's regret doesn't work. It gets you sued. If you grant a franchise and you don't have a reason to rescind it for breach, you're gonna tend to get sued unless you've got a very forgiving party on the other side. Although Roberts' rules may let you reconsider something, state law doesn't let you have buyer's regret after you enter a contract.
Mr. Panell?
So, Mr. DeVito's point that he failed to say why there needed to be a second franchise doesn't make it an invalid application?
It's very much-
Doesn't have a local address?
It's very much similar to the argument that was just made about carriages. You, as the council, voted and made a judgment. If you did not believe that the application was current or complete, that time to make that was prior to the vote. If in the judgment of the majority of the council that approved the franchise, the council accepted the application.
Doc?
I think it's been just about a half hour ago. We're stuck with our vote. So, let's just go on. Let's run and get sued or somebody. We may have made a mistake. We may have not have made a mistake. It's over with. I believe our attorney is correct. I thought about this too with our first round of carriages, our group. He said no. So, we're stuck, folks.
Anybody else? Mr. Jones, you got any closing? I want to listen about that.
Just again, I, you know, get, I don't know. Yeah, what I've asked has been clear. I think that, you know, my, my opinion is that they're, they're clear and they're valid. Um, you know, and if we're gonna be loose on interpreting those three items, then, you know, for the future, then what? I don't know. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration and, you know, hopefully we'll still, somebody decided to bring this up for reconsideration. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, no further on that one. Number two, the new business council approval discretion of 2006 records?
We don't have to discuss.
Say again.
Move to discuss.
Floor is open.
Move on. What are we destroying?
Madam Clerk, go answer that one.
Every year, a batch of records is destroyed. There's a list made of exactly what's in those boxes.
Open that.
And I'd be happy to pass this around, but it's all 2006 records. And this will happen each year that you'll be asked, next year you'll be asked to approve 2007 records.
Mr. Berry?
This is the standard operating procedures we do this area, which it can keep these outdated records and, and I think the list of records there are just, are, geez, I don't remember exactly what they are, but, you know, it's not an uncommon. I mean, it's what we do every year.
Doc?
Make a motion to destroy the 2006 records.
Say again.
Been segued, Mr. Panell? Did you hear?
Well, we've just made some wonderful decisions and that we've tried to reverse and can't. And I think a broad statement of destroying 2006 records without knowing what's being destroyed, if it's in accordance with state code and it's gonna happen every year, then it needs to happen with what records are being destroyed and is it in accordance with state code?
Okay. I believe you're about to look at the document, sir, that's ended, being passed down your way to answer that question. Mr. DeVito?
We still retain CDs of the council meetings.
Those have to be counted.
So, that, that stays in perpetuity.
Can you give them the addition of what?
There's no, there are no council minutes.
No, I meant the video, audio, video recordings.
Yes, and on the list of what's being destroyed, there are no minutes.
Can you, can you read what's on the list of the rest of the council?
Sure.
So, we can be assured that, and for the public at large.
Okay, it would be, how does this translate? Okay. Okay. Okay, everything AP is accounts payable. It's AP checks. And then the numbers are listed, 487, 56 through 49577, box, batch number two, 49578 through 50282, batch number three, 50281 to 51056, batch number four, 51057 to 51649. And so, those are all checks that were, where bills were being paid. Then there, in box number five, there's payroll January through December, administration of justice journals, in box number six, payroll vendors, W2s and 1099s from 2006, in box number seven, payroll journals January through September, box number eight, payroll journals October to December, box number nine, payroll check stubs, box number 10, general journal, deposit tickets January through September, box 11, bank statements, deposit tickets October through December, box 12 is alcohol beverage tax reports, box 13 is business licenses and receipts, transit deposits from January through December, box 14 is full of timesheets from January to June, box 15 is timesheets from July through December, and the last box, number 16, is the cash receipts journal.
For the record, those should have been destroyed two years ago in accordance with state code.
Okay, well, we can do it now.
Actually, there was an adjustment. There's gonna be, you'll see it different the next year because it was changed again by legislative action in 2011.
Yeah, four years.
Which will show up in your book.
Before the discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, number three, B&amp;B license fee discussion, ordinance, I don't, I can't remember who.
Oh.
See who had that one. That would be mine, but I think that was from the previous discussion that we had.
Being carried over.
Mr. Weaver, you have any input on that one? Did you do an ordinance?
I have not done an ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Panell.
Move to postpone until the city attorney has written an ordinance.
Should I have, please?
But before you do that, maybe you wanna hear the rest of mine. I'm not sure, honestly, that an ordinance is in line. And the clerk has a difference of opinion, and that's why there is not an ordinance, 'cause I want direction from someone before I draw it. If you want one drawn.
Ms. Clerk, go ahead and explain what's going on here.
Just ask if you would pass, I, I whited out, of course, the business name and address, but this is what the licenses for the lower amount, one to 10, look like. And here is also, this is information from the business license fee list, so you have And the reason I really wanted you to see what the license says is because even though people may come and get a conditionally used permit for a B&amp;B or be grandfathered for, for instance, four units, by virtue of the fact that they walk out of here with a piece of paper that tells them, we're giving them the right to run an operation from one to 10, some folks have decided that we mean what this says. They believe that we mean they have a right to run an operation from one to 10, no matter what the definition of B&amp;B is, by virtue of ordinance 1816. And so, there's been this tug of war, and several people have said, "Well, if I'm not supposed to have a license for more than five units, why are you giving me a license for 10 units?" Based on ordinance 1816, Main Street was adjusted to reflect that ordinance. The hitch and the giddy up is what happens for folks who have legally six or more, and there are some of those who, that were in place before 1816 was passed. It's one of those carryover things. So, my reasoning is, since there are B&amp;Bs legally operating with more than five, what do we charge them for their license? So, my request is that council determine whether they'll be charged 75 or 100, and then we can, in the next codification, modify this list and minimize the confusion.
And change that?
Well, we were able to change it to one to five because of the ordinance, but we couldn't legally change six and above because we had no direction from council to do that. And to me, it's a, an extremely simple way to fix an, so.
Mr. Panell?
Well, 1816 basically redid the whole zoning ordinance, and I have yet to find in there that says that we cannot exceed five units in a CUP for a bed and breakfast, and it's apparent that based on our fee schedule, that B&amp;Bs with a CUP from one to 10 is $75. I see nothing to the contrary that says that we have a problem, unless somebody can show me a reference that says we can only have B&amp;Bs not to exceed five units.
Well, the definition of B&amp;B was created in that ordinance, and it says one to five units. Hence.
Tell me what page it is.
Um, I don't have it memorized. It's 54 pages long.
Mr. DeVito?
A question for the city clerk.
Yes.
Are there any B&amp;Bs with more than 10 units?
I believe there's one with 11, but it's a very mixed bag because you have those in R1 that are operating as non-conforming uses.
Right.
Page 451.
And then you have those that are in other districts, and so, there are actually three combinations of B&amp;Bs.
So, we're talking about one B&amp;B that exceeds the one to 10 limit?
That I'm aware of. I, I don't have the whole thing memorized. Actually, Glenna is very patiently going through every single folder and seeing whether people are doing what they're actually permitted to do. It's quite the process. But meanwhile, back at the ranch, people are believing that we're turning them loose with permission to do more.
Mr. Berry?
I'd like, you know, response from our city attorney as to see if he thinks there's a problem. I mean, are we gonna create another problem by creating an ordinance?
I think we may create another problem, and that's one of the reasons I would like guidance from the table before I draw you an ordinance. We've got non-conforming six, seven, eight, something, unit, B&amp;Bs, all right, but right now, our fee structure says they pay $75. And just because we issued them a license that says the fee is $75 for one to 10, does not mean they can operate additional units beyond what they were originally approved for without getting approval somehow for those units. This license doesn't tell you you can go out and violate some other provision. And clearly, the ordinance that was passed that redid all these changes says that B&amp;Bs from that point on are gonna be defined as five units or less, so making all the others that there is apparently a list of that was created at the time, non-conforming uses. And they can continue to be non-conforming uses, but that doesn't mean they can go out and add additional rooms or units. If they do, they're gonna come in violation of other provisions of our code, and if we try to address it here, the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have restaurants, because if you look at our fee structure, restaurants are broke down by how many seats? And if we say that we're gonna have to define more carefully here, we're gonna have to define more carefully there, so that someone doesn't argue, "Well, my restaurant license says I can have from one to 50, and I've only had 10, but I'm gonna go and put in 25 new seats by expanding my wall, and you've gave me a permit." We haven't given them a permit to do that. We haven't given them a plumbing permit. We haven't gave them a occupancy license. We haven't given them a permit to expand their building, to change the exterior if it's in the historic district, or any other thing. Granting them a business license is not telling them they can increase their number of units. I think we're, we're being sold a bill of goods by one or more potential bed and breakfast owners that they think that we're giving them some kind of license beyond what we are because we're leaving a expanded number in there.
Mr. Panell?
Well, in accordance with the change in 1816, there are 12, for whatever reason, legally non-conforming B&amp;Bs, of which only one has more than five, and a strict interpretation after that in following the code, regardless of what it kicks out on the, the business license, says, and I will recant my not being able to find it, says that there'll be no more than five units, period. So, therefore, any CUP that's approved or license that is issued for more than five units is in violation of the code. Now, I see no reason to change it, and possibly the reason it says one to 10 units, whether that's built into the computer program or whatever, is that we do have one legally non-conforming that's over five but under 10.
Mr. Weaver needs some instruction from the table, what to do with the post-ordinance.
I make a motion to leave the law.
Second?
Second.
Been segued, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Listen, carried. And before, it's ordinance to regulate limos. Mr. Weaver was supposed to get us a statu-, I mean, ordinance.
At this point, I've, I guess you need to open your discussion before I-
Maybe to open discussion.
Say again. All right, now it's open.
Okay. Uh, I've received some comments from various sources. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking to regulate. I think at this point, I either need you to give me some point person to talk to from the council, or we need to hold a workshop, or someone needs to give me some guidance of what you really are trying to regulate, not regulate. Some of the comments I've had from business people lean toward regulating taxis, some toward regulating limos. We have a taxi, we have taxi ordinance information already. We try, or the, there was a passage of a different one, all, I don't know, I guess I'm saying, I don't know where you wanna go with this. I can write a whole new chapter and spend a lot of money that no one at this table is gonna want to even read out alone, pass. So, without any guidance, we're spinning wheels at this time, in my mind.
Mr. De-
Okay. For whatever reason.
Any further, Ms. Balance?
Is there not a state ordinance that regulates limos?
No. There are certain state statutes that, that do some regulation as far as a comprehensive, this is what limos can do, this is what taxis can do. No, I don't think there is a, a black and white complete footprint there.
My understanding is, from wading through the amount of information that's down there, is that taxi franchise is very clearly defined by the state, and a taxi franchise was issued at some point, and, and once a franchise, a taxi franchise is issued, it's, you can't just, council can't just take it back. There's got to be due process for that. It could be mistaken, but what appears to me to have happened is that when there was a codification, the word franchise simply was taken out. That doesn't appear to have been legal. Whether the taxi company that's running in this town is what the people want is a separate issue. My understanding is, once that franchise is issued, it cannot be arbitrarily made to disappear, and that appears to be what happened. I really would encourage a workshop. There is a huge amount of legal information to be absorbed, and a lot of limousine people would like to offer their expertise and their understanding of the law, so.
Mr. Panell?
Has this now, wasn't this an issue three or four years ago that came before you think of the vote?
There was a recall election, I believe, of an ordinance passed by the table. I had to go back and look at my notes, but I believe that, and they recalled what had been passed at this table.
I'd make a motion and we set a workshop to address this because I don't think we know what we're even looking for. We, we aren't talking taxis, we're talking regulating limousines based on this item on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, set up a workshop on it. Number five-
Can we have, can we have a date on that, perhaps?
Right now?
We'll have to figure when everybody's available.
Yeah.
Which is getting harder and harder.
When shall we bring that up and talk about it, decide? Will you facilitate that?
Finding out when everybody's available for a workshop.
After all the budget workshops. Okay, tell me to do that. I ask you. Please, please do that, after the budget workshops are completed.
Okay, be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, number five is postponed until the second meeting of February 2012. Set the workshop review right animal, drone vehicle permanent requirements. Unless you all wanna change it, stays as it is?
Stays as it is.
I'll change this. And number six, parking lot lease resolution.
Who to discuss item six, parking lot lease resolution?
Second.
Okay. You should have a copy of the agreement that I signed with Judge Barr. You shouldn't have. Okay. Sorry. You should have a copy of the resolution that is attached to my copy of the, it's, it's the same one as last year, it's just changed the dates. Mr. Panell?
All due respect, I'd like clarification. You made a comment last meeting that this could be postponed because the contract had already been signed. Is that not correct?
I believe I did, but I think you were gonna postpone it anyway.
And we went through the same issue last year.
Okay. Well, let me finish my answer, sir. Let me finish my answer. Okay? You asked me a question, let me finish. No, he asked me a question. All right. Yes, sir, I did that because we're postponing everything. We were running, what, 10:15, I believe is what time it was, and everybody voted unanimously to postpone this. Now, if you wanna bring it back up, let's talk about it. Yes, sir? Let's go.
And your, and your comment was it's, it's no big deal not to postpone it because it's already been signed, and we went through this last year, that the resolution should have been read and passed before the contract was signed on any lease in accordance with state code.
But I have this, the mayor has the authority to enter into lease agreements, not on real property, at his discretion, and then bring it to the council for approval or disapproval. Is that not the fact, Mr. Weaver? Since I think we discussed all of this the last time I entered into this agreement.
The email from Mr. Schoen earlier today, I think bears what you just said to be basically the position of the municipal league. I think that was the position that was taken last year. I think that's been the position in previous discussions of this matter, and I, and I see no reason that it should depart from that.
Make a motion to set a parking lot lease resolution.
Second.
Probably should do a real call vote on this, on resolutions and ordinances.
Yes.
Yes. Real call vote. Any further discussion before we get into this too far? Like I said, it's the last, it's the same agreement as last year. We leased the city, or the county lot from the city. It doesn't pertain to any city property that is being leased. We are accepting the lease from the county, or leasing it from the county, so we have no property tied up in this. Therefore, it's not a matter of real estate, which is under purview of the council. Real property, I should say. Yes?
Ms. Balance?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Panell?
Staying.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Flag zero one.
I'm gonna need a motion to put a resolution number on it.
Make a motion to put a resolution, or give a number to the resolution and read for discussion.
Second.
As we just finished, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, this will be Resolution 592. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk treasurer of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to execute that certain instrument consisting of two typewritten sheets and denominated as Carroll County Western District Courthouse Parking Lot Lease Agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lesser, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor and city clerk, excuse me, and clerk treasurer of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, are hereby authorized to execute that certain instrument consisting of two typewritten sheets and denominated as Carroll County Western District Courthouse Parking Lot Lease Agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lesser, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy, whereby said city agrees to lease the following described property. The existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse located at 44 South Main, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lots presently occupying the property directly north, east, and south of said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, first- said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, First Street, and Curbs respectively, for a term of one year commencing on January 1, 2012, and ending at midnight on December 31, 2012. A copy of said instrument being attached here, too.
Notice the agreement is, the lease agreement is file marked December the 30th, 2011. So we're getting the day before it was supposed to be done. Okay. All in favor? So, aye.
That one should be a real call.
This should be a real call, okay.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Six zero.
Number seven, pro temp for 2012. The pro temp I was talking about at the last discussion was the, for the rest of the year in my absence. At the council meetings, clerk still has the discretion to pick, or y'all have the discretion to pick. Mr. Berry, pick. Mr. Pennell?
Move to discuss.
Okay, yeah.
Second.
Once again, I pick Mr. Berry's pro temp for the year 2012. Mr. Pennell?
It's always been voted on before, and I think the recent change in the code says that in the absence or disability of the mayor, that the city clerk or someone appointed shall take over, but I think on a temporary basis. And talking with other people at municipal league, that until such time that the mayor doesn't show up at the meeting, and then the council, if there's a quorum, votes a pro temp at that time, not for the whole year.
Just to oversee the meetings.
Mr. Weaver?
The added section to 1443 501 is Section 3 that was added by the 2011 amendment, says, "If the mayor is unable to perform the duties of office or cannot be located, the city clerk or other elected official of the city is, if designated by the mayor, may perform all functions of a mayor." It says all functions. And one of the functions of the mayor is to reside over the council. I believe that the wording as it is would allow him to designate that person.
Ms. Balance?
What does the paragraph, immediately prior to the paragraph you just read, say?
It says, "In the absence of the mayor, the city council shall elect a president pro temp to reside over council meetings."
Please repeat that.
But that language is then modified by the following paragraph. If the mayor has done his duty of appointing the person, that language modifies that previous paragraph.
Okay, then, please read the following paragraph again.
If the mayor is unable to perform the duties of the office and cannot or cannot be located, the city clerk or other elected official of the city, if designated by the mayor, may perform all functions of a mayor during the disability or the absence of the mayor.
Well, that contradicts itself. So what are we supposed to do about that?
If it contradicts itself, then maybe you better take it up with the state legislature before we have that occur. But right now, it gives the mayor the power, if he knows he's going to be absent or disabled, to pick someone else, as long as they're an elected official to perform his duties. He cannot perfect, get the water clerk and put them in his office, but he has constitute, or the state elected officials of the city from which he can choose.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, it would make sense that the authority invested in the mayor by the voters in the city would translate to the ability of the mayor to pick a successor as opposed to council. So, you know, in these rare occasions, and they're very rare, that unless we would deviate from what the voters chose as to who the mayor is to represent them, it would only be in keeping that that authority would stay intact by the mayor appointing his pro temp.
Anybody else? Real call vote, is that what you said? Everybody's vote will work. They don't even need to vote on it.
I don't think you have to have a vote. They may think you have to. And if they do, the state legislature may need to redefine their statute.
Okay. Nothing else, and move on to number eight. Discussion missions reduction plan, first meeting in February, is it?
Yes.
Well, let's do it the right way, so I don't get caught every once in a while not doing this, right? Motion to discuss?
Second.
No, it's not the first meeting in February.
I know. But it's on the agenda, so are we staying with this? Because.
It's not. Is it the first meeting in February today?
No, this is January.
Okay. When, may I say?
Yes, please.
There has been a great deal of discussion about how to keep things alive so they don't fall through the cracks. And it was decided a couple of meetings ago that if some, even if something is being postponed, that it would be noted on the agenda so it wouldn't fall through the cracks, which is why this is here, so that at the next meeting, it's still alive.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so it is to be discussed, first meeting in February. Number nine, discuss license fee for apartment buildings, Mr. Berry and Mr. Pennell, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open.
Move to postpone until the first meeting in February.
Second.
Oh, any further discussion? Mr. Berry?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I don't have a problem with deferring it to the first meeting or second meeting.
First.
Or third. But I would like to see if possibly we could get some sort of schedule values so we can give to the council by that meeting. Possibly the clerk can come up with schedule values for us.
What do you mean?
Kind of like the same thing you did for the bed and breakfast.
Oh, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong subject.
These are apartment, licensed apartment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to postpone, and a second to postpone the first meeting in February. Any further discussion? Mr. Pennell?
I think that the reason for putting that on the agenda was because there's a catch-all. And with the change in the legally non-conforming apartment buildings, that there was a feeling that there ought to be a business license associated with that. And without saying it's going to be in the catch-all for $75 or whatever it is, that we'd need to amend the schedule. And I think what Mr. Berry, if I understood correctly, is asking the clerk to do is come up with a relative equal application fee to consider at this table for being an apartment building landlord, I guess you'd call it.
You probably have to do that in ordinance, wouldn't you? If you're going to start setting fees on something, there's no established fees on it.
Well, I think he's wanting to have some idea, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but he's wanting to have an idea of how much business is being generated, or how many dollars is being looked at, really.
Well, both. I mean, we will, I think we will need an ordinance. I think that loophole that Mr. Pennell is talking about is real vague. I'm not even sure we charge apartments a occupation or a business license.
I think so.
And I think the feeling is that apartments are businesses and should be charged accordingly.
And then there should be, I think, to generate, what you may be asking her, too, is how, how do we look at somebody who rents three apartments as opposed to a complex of 30 or more?
Yes, yes. Zero to 10, zero to five, five to 10, 10 to 20.
A whole nother can of worms, okay.
That list that was used for the B and B is probably a good starting place. And you all have that already. Would you consider that useful?
It's easy.
I'll get with you.
Okay. All right, postpone to the first meeting. Did we vote on this one yet?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number 10 has been discussed. Number 11, 2011 date for a workshop on the 2011 cleanup budget, cleanup amendment. Resolution, I'll get it right in a minute. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss item 11, cleanup budget.
Made in second. Floor is open. Floor is open.
We need a, we need a date because we've got a one April publication date of the status of city financial. So we've got two months, and if we don't get with it, we didn't even have a mid-year budget review level. I don't know where we're at at this point in time. I just feel it's important that we at least reasonably give us a proposed cleanup resolution.
Lonny, you want to address that?
I think we could probably do it in, after the current budget.
Okay, well, what does the purpose have in the 2011 if you've got a current budget?
Well, I think it's to get balance. To get balance.
Okay.
Review it, and I don't know if it requires a new resolution.
You're the CPA, so I'll go with that. Okay?
So what was the answer?
He says it's prudent, yeah.
We could do it in February.
February? Okay. Second meeting in February? Need a discussion on the second meeting in February? All right, somebody want to make a motion to do that work up?
Point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
The question was, normally there's a workshop before that. Are we going to have a workshop, or is it just going to be presented as a resolution at the second meeting?
So however y'all want it.
I think we need to have a workshop so we can understand.
Okay. So it won't have to be.
You guys done it in the past.
I don't remember a workshop on.
I'd like to be informed if possible.
Okay, so if we have a workshop, let's see, I think we talked about last time, whoever recommends a workshop has to set it up and run it, right?
Well, that's a budget item.
I thought it was all workshops, I didn't know. All right, just trying to stay.
We're going to have it on the second, we want to have this done by the second meeting in February, is that what I heard?
Yeah. Apparently, we're going to have to have it at night. We don't seem to be able to, be able to arrange a date at a meeting for many.
Well, apparently, we've got more leeway on that one than number 12, so. Yes, sir.
Well, with the change in the way we're doing resolutions, if we get it in adequate time before the second meeting in February where we can at least review it, maybe even come in and ask Lonny questions, where we have in the past, just once it's read, it's done. Hopefully, if there's some glitches, we can fix them at the table. So I would say we'd be able, as long as we can get the resolution adequate time prior to instead of having a workshop.
We're going to have to poll everybody again, I guess, on their availability dates and do that.
Just at the meeting.
Yes, sir.
I think what I'm hearing is if we, if Lonny can give us that information prior to the second meeting, preferably a couple of weeks maybe before, I mean, if we have that like in the second week in February, then everybody will have time to review it. And if we have questions, we can ask Lonny about it, and then have a meeting without a workshop.
Okay. All right. Is that the motion?
That'll work.
We need that in the motion. Somebody want to tackle that one?
I'll move that Lonny provide us the information for a cleanup budget by the second week in February, so we can review it and discuss it for our second meeting in February.
Second.
Made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number 12, discussion of budget 2012.
Move to discuss item 12.
Aye.
Made in second, floor is open. About eight, seven days, seven working days. Yes, sir.
Since we've been having, as was so eloquently stated before, meetings after meeting, and I'm part of the problem, I realize, but I make a motion that the mayor requests the finance director to prepare a 2012 budget resolution based on the approved 2011 budget and reduce all budget lines 20 percent. Furthermore, include a statement that there will be no 2012 raises for any department that has requested them, no capital improvement projects or equipment. Vehicle purchases will be made until a review of the first quarter budget has been accomplished, no later than 15 April 2012. To be included in the budget will be the requested cemetery budget request, less the 20 percent, and the planning commission requested amount, full amount, for a new zoning map. Any excess to be placed into whatever the right verbiage would be, I've got reserve account, to be redistributed at the first budget review in April.
Did you get all that?
Oh, absolutely not. But I've got bones of it.
Is there a second? Okay, okay. Any further discussion, Mr. DeVito?
Well, we're trying to have budget workshops right now, so rather than pass something that we've been in this room for over three and a half hours, this is an item that should be discussed in the budget workshop. This is not something we decide on at the 11th hour, especially with items like 20 percent cuts in departments. This is not the time. We're not at our best after three and a half hours of debate and discussion. This is an item that should be left to the budget workshop.
Mr. Pennell?
Of which we have not been able to have and has not been productive, and there's never been a majority of the council at most of the workshops, and we could have a special meeting no later than 31 January to approve the resolution.
Okay, I guess my question would be, why a resolution should an ordinance?
Because the budget is always done in a resolution.
Not always. In fact, if you do an ordinance, you may be pulling the sheets out from some of the department heads, because they will be not part of the, part of the ordinance.
Did we not do the budget as a resolution last year?
I don't know.
I believe we did.
Look back through the files, and I think every council, it's gone back and forth, kind of.
All right. Mr. Weaver, what's your recommendation on ordinance or resolution?
Mr. Pennell is correct, it's gone back and forth. I think the current recommendation from the municipal league has been to adopt budgets by resolution, but I'm not certain that's the last word on it. The word, the state law allows it to be done either way. So I, I think it's at the discretion of the table, really.
Ms. Balance?
The last, the 2011 budget was passed by resolution, according to the minutes from that meeting.
Okay.
So there's a little history for you.
Mr. DeVito?
I don't want to get into semantics about whether it's a resolution or an ordinance. The issue before us now is a 20 percent across-the-board cut to departments at the 11th hour. I reiterate that we're not in the right frame of mind to be making these decisions, that we still have a week, we need a budget workshop, everybody needs to do two weeks, everybody needs their due diligence about. needs their due diligence about finding a time where we can all get together fresh and discuss these.